To order the meeting of the Planning Commission of Sebastopol for July 25th. We'll start with a roll call.
Commissioner Ottinger. Commissioner Burns.
Here.
And Vice Chair Fritz.
Here.
And Everett, Chair Fernandez is absent from this meeting tonight.
My thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for people, members of the public, to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If any member of the public would wish to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. Seeing as we have no one in the room and only our applicant, I mean, there's no members of the public.
That is correct. And we have not received any comments for the commission over the past couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Or week, I guess, since your last meeting.
Does anyone, any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest on any of the items tonight?
And actually Chair Fernandez did note that he is within the Queso area as well, which is the other reason why he was like...
Makes sense.
Between that and his, yeah, being remote.
Yeah. Okay. We have no minutes to approve, so let's move on to our first public hearing item, which is the Anytime Fitness Use Permit. And we'll start with the staff presentation.
All right. This is an application for a conditional use permit from Grant Withham on behalf of Anytime Fitness at 968 Gravenstein Highway South. Anytime Fitness has requested to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which will be staffed Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The gym will also offer group training classes which range from one to five members and are ran by a certified personal trainer. A use permit in this zone is normally subject to the Planning Director approval. However, with the 24-hour use and this shopping center is known to have parking issues, the Planning Director is referring this application to Planning Commission. As noted, the project is located within the Gravenstein Station Shopping Center on the southern end of Sebastopol. And as Anytime Fitness fits the criteria for a form of the business of the Sebastopol Municipal Code, however, the code allows for these form of businesses to operate within this shopping center, the Redwood Marketplace Shopping Center, Fiesta Shopping Center, and South Point Shopping Center. The applicant has provided a parking diagram to show where the designated parking area is for staff within the lot and that patrons would be required to find parking in other locations within this parking area as there is no assigned parking throughout the shopping center with the agreement with all the other shop owners. As the use is proposed to be 24 hours and parking is impacted on this lot, staff is recommending some of the following conditions of approval for the Planning Commission to consider. First one being limiting class and training during the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. of seven people or less, having at least a 15-minute interview between classes to minimize overlap between people coming and going, potentially requiring staff to be on-site 24 hours or reduce the 24-hour operation. And lastly, requiring security for hours outside of when staff is present. With that, I will conclude my staff report and would be happy to answer any questions the commission has. The applicant Grant is in the audience tonight and will be available for questions when he is called upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions of staff? Staff question? Seeing none, I will ask...
I can hear us. I can hear us. I mean, somebody's mics are on, so I can hear us.
Is that ever?
Uh, I am.
There you are. So can you make your comments now?
Oh, perfect, I am. Awesome. So I'll keep it very simple. My name is Grant and this is my project, the Anytime Fitness. And just a little background, been a resident of accounting for 30 years, pretty much the majority of my life. And I've been in Anytime Fitness franchisee for 11 years. And really, I'm just excited, you know, to have the opportunity to provide another great option for, you know, residents of Sebastopol, you know, for people to be able to reach their health and wellness goals. And, you know, the project, you know, very simple. I mean, it'll bring more business to the shopping center, help our neighbors. It'll provide jobs for people in Sebastopol and it'll generate tax revenue for the city and the county. So, yeah, just overall, we're excited to put this in front of you guys and have the opportunity to get this thing over.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
That's great. Does anyone have any questions?
I was just wondering if you were, okay, with the conditions that staff has put on, maybe eliminating the seven-day, 28 a.m. time for slots for classes and having a 15-minute interval between sessions and staff aside and the power outage. And the rest of the security of this staff.
So I just missed that first portion of your question, it was a little, little low. But I'm assuming you're asking, am I okay with the conditions kind of set forth in the analysis? So I would say the only one that I would not be okay with would be, you know, not being able to be open 24/7 with our model, you know, puts it. For us, it just wouldn't be, one, we can't actually do that with our franchise. So I couldn't not be open 24/7 with, you know, key fob access. In terms of having, you know, a security guard there, you know, when our staff members are not, or having staff members there, you know, 24/7, that's just not, you know, economically feasible for me. So, you know, in terms of the conditions set forth in Exhibit B, those are all good, you know, limiting the classes to certain times, that's, that's fine. But if you just, that last condition of, you know, having to be open and have staff 24/7, that would just be too difficult for us. And that just wouldn't work for me.
Having that on my question, I guess it'd lighten up that response. I'm curious, where are you currently a franchise owner and do you have time staff to utilize hours? I have that location, it seems like a, uh, very... Where is this situation, how have I been staffed?
There's two unmuted Zooms in the room. Vice Chair, it's yours. And Susie, I think it's yours.
We didn't join earlier.
Oh. The second carry, the phantom carry is unmuted.
Grant, can you respond to that? The question that's been there is about, you know, where are we to have a franchise and, you know, what are the security measures in place or, you know, for the hours that's not staffed?
Sorry, I was muted. I heard everything. So, that's a great question. My first club that I opened was in Nevada, Giselle, Los. And I have four other locations in different parts of the state. I've got one in the Central Coast, I've got a couple in the Sierra foothills, and one in Winters, California, which is about an hour away to West Des Moines. So the model has actually been in place for over 20 years and is actually in place at over 4,000 locations. It has worked very well for that time. We've never had an incident at my locations. And just so, you know, just to be clear, the system is not fully open to the public after hours. So when we lock the doors, we actually have our full security system in place that's on. So there are a couple of security features that Anytime Fitness is really big on. One of them, a panic button that is located and shown to every member on our tour. There are also panic necklaces. So if you're in the gym any time of day, staff or not, you hit that panic button, you hit one of the panic necklaces, and it goes right to one of our monitoring stations. And we actually all get phone calls. So I'll get a phone call, the managers on site will get phone calls, and we will dispatch the police and fire emergency services to the gym. And we will also respond. For me, obviously, I live very close, so that's an easy response for me. But the managers who manage the gym, that's part of their job responsibility. If an alarm goes off at 3:00 a.m., the police are there and they're there. There's also an AED on-site, so if anybody were to have cardiac arrest, we have an AED on-site for a state kit. And the only way to get into the club is with a secure access key fob, which is issued to only members. Other parts of the security system are, we've got cameras everywhere. Obviously, we have that, you know, door access. And we also have a tailgating system, so if somebody thought, hey, I'll just scan my key and let somebody in, we actually get that alert. And that's something that members, if they do, they will lose their membership. So, you know, we've got a 911 call-in that members can utilize if they're stuck, they don't have a cell phone with them. So we have a lot of security features in place. And again, the system is not, you know, fully open during less-staffed hours. And I will say, it's worked, you know, splendidly over 20 years, even before I got involved. I was a member of the Indianside in San Diego prior, so I've seen it from, you know, the membership perspective and also as an owner of it as well.
Thank you.
Yes. That is correct. So we're just, I know there was some concern about the amount of people coming into the gym. And so one of the conditions was, you know, limiting, you know, classes, which bring larger amounts of people into the facility. But, you know, the junior shoppers, people who just want to, you know, they're getting off a shift, you know, at a bar or a restaurant, and maybe it's 11 o'clock at night and other gyms are open, and they're able to, you know, scan their key, they're a member already, get into the facility, changing, you know, using the treadmill. So, you know, the gym is open 24/7 for members who just, you know, who want to do their own thing.
Thank you, Grant. I have a second question. So you said you were okay with the conditions. I just wanted to make sure that the hours that's proposed, the classes would be 8 to 7.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
8 to 7 and... And honestly, it's the same conditions, but is that appropriate? Was it mentioned that it's an actual 7 people? Is that a condition or is that just a, you know, recommendation for this function or?
It was kind of a recommendation from the last meeting we had, we were already in the last studio. So the application states ranging from one to five members. And one idea of the commission's thought as far as, you know, saying that membership of women, for instance, that I might have to come back if, you know, business goes off, classes were successful, you know, and have some more people on that are daily, a lot of us. To go through that, I'll just kind of expand that for all of it. The commission goes that, you know, and so, you know, I want to refer to that. That was just...
So, Grant, does that make sense of the way that, it's not a condition, it's a way to some point, but that recommendation was about seven people per class rather than the five in our application? Maybe it works with it. Would it be saying application is kind of what we intend here to do? Unless we specifically say in front of the audience, it's a condition. So I just want to know, if seven would be preferable to you or 10? Or you have another number that you could potentially see being either absolutely maximal because if you say five and then you have a number of six, then you technically have to back that as half, half six.
Yeah. Yeah, you know. You know, I'm good with five. I mean, I know, I know it says classes, but, you know, what we're doing is more personal training and kind of small group setting. So, you know, we're not bringing in, you know, we're not looking to bring in, you know, 12 or 20 people into a group. Class is more, you know, five people working with a trainer, you know. So it's, I'm totally fine with five, so that's okay with me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, I love that. I mean, obviously being able to service people who are wanting to, you know, achieve their wellness goals for forward and afterward, that would make things much easier for me, for sure. So, yeah, if that was an option, I would take it a second.
Any other questions? Okay, at that time, we'll open this side up for public comments. So if any member of the public wishes to give us a comment, now is your opportunity. We'll get that unanimous to speak. Any other... Hand virtually or actually? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and bring it back for any further discussion from the commission. So maybe if we take these kind of questions, so it sounds like the five people per class is good, so we don't need to go beyond that. I, Commissioner Ottinger suggested 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for classes. I am fine with that. Do you have any concerns about that? So, yeah, so it sounds like the commission is good with the extended hours. Are there any... Is there any kind of further discussion about the security issues and staff's recommendations regarding that?
I don't have issues with it. It seems to be working in other communities. It looks like this comes back in four years, but certainly if we had problems, we could bring it back sooner if there were problems with security.
I'm sorry, so normally use permits do not have to return to us for review unless there's an issue.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm fine with it being 24/7. There was a little issue, no one has discussed, about neighbors over the back fence, but I think we looked at it before at other uses on this site. And it's just a few houses and the way the building is constructed, I don't see that that would be a real issue. Unless they played really loud music.
Commissioner Ottinger, for that one, that is the recommendation to have a good neighbor policy to address any noise or other issues. That's kind of a, you know, making sure that people coming in the middle of the night aren't slamming car doors and, you know, just having a staff trained to make people aware that there's residential neighbors nearby. And also having a contact for the, if neighbors do have problems, they go to Anytime Fitness first rather than to the Planning Department.
Thank you. Did you have any comment on that, Debbie?
Yeah, I definitely am not comfortable with that. I feel very differently. I just don't think being at a gym with an unstaffed, even though there's key... I mean, I think all the security is fantastic, but, you know, coming from the spa industry where, you know, I've also had spas for 30 years and there's been no issues, and yet most spas have issues. Most every single spa has some issue with, with this. And that's with an employee who you've vetted and with customers who've been coming forever and ever and just two people, you know, in a room. So I just, it doesn't feel comfortable to me to have people there without some security. I get it that it's not, it doesn't pencil out financially, but I think that needs to be part of the whole thing. You know, that, that there is some type of security in place for those, for those hours where there's just going to be people there alone. I mean, and I know that they can be called at 3:00 in the morning, but, okay, you know, like, you know, it just seems a little unrealistic to me too with four or five different franchises and a manager who's going to be there and providing jobs in Sebastopol. Places are closing all over Sebastopol because they can't find people to work. So that's amazing if you find someone who's going to get up at 3:00 a.m. And, you know, I mean, we had an incident where there was somebody who was very aggressive and going into all the different stores. The police didn't come for like five hours. Like, we shut our store down because they were so nervous. So I can't imagine if this was 3:00 a.m. and I just, it's something I don't feel comfortable with.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Ottinger that I feel like, you know, this has been a franchise business. It's been in operation for a long time and it sounds like, you know, you do have some security protocols in place. I remember when you had come to us some years ago about the downtown location and we had a very long conversation about the security. I feel confident that this seems to be working and I don't, I'm not inclined to make any additional requirements around, around that issue. And what else? Oh, the other issue was the scheduling classes, so there's a 15-minute kind of gap in between classes. Is anyone, I think that's okay. I don't have a question one way or the other.
Yeah, I think that's funny. I think it really helps. I know Coach's Corner, if there are 15 minutes, it gives people time to park and still get in and not parking farther down the street. But I think there's plenty of parking farther down the street there.
Yeah.
So I'm not really worried about that, but I think it's a good policy if you're holding a class to have them at 15-minute intervals.
And is that okay with you, Grant? You know, I may concern about the 15-minute gaps between classes.
No, no, I mean, 15 minutes sounds more than, more than fair. And the logic and reasoning behind it seems pretty solid. So, yeah, no, I would be totally okay with putting a 15-minute block between when a session ends and when a session would begin.
Great, thank you. So I think we've covered staff's concerns, is that correct? Am I missing anything? Okay. So what I have heard then is that we would need a condition, well, want first modify condition six to allow the classes between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And then, you know, maybe in that same condition, we add the 15-minute headway between classes or whatever, leeway or whatever you want to word that. And is that... Yeah. Does that make sense? Does that mean, had anything else that they heard? You can so move if you like? Put your mic around.
I so move with the two exceptions that Paul referenced, the 15 minutes and the new time change.
And then the one thing that you, I think someone brought up was the good neighbor policy, which is not currently in the condition. So if desired, add that as part of the condition.
And so what, I mean, do we have like a standard what that is or how does that get crafted into what exactly is a good neighbor policy?
We do for, what we can do, so we do for restaurants, it includes things like not bottle dumping after 9:00 p.m., you know, things like that. But what you could say is, John, do you have language or do you want me to just make it up on the fly? Okay. I have more experience making up conditions than you do. That, that the applicant shall develop a good neighbor policy that addresses contacts for neighbors and training for staff to, and submit that as part of their, I believe they have a building permit. So submit that as part of their building permit for staff review and approval.
And a good neighbor policy added.
Okay. I will second that motion. Is there any other further discussion or should we take a vote? All right, seeing no further discussion, let's ask for, call for a vote on the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns? And Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes with two ayes and one abstention and one absent of Chair Fernandez.
Great, thank you. So, thank you, Grant, for bringing this forward and wish you good luck.
Thank you.
And Grant, just as a reminder, there is a seven-day appeal period that starts today and will end next Tuesday by 5:00 p.m. If we don't have any appeals for the project, it'll become final.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Great, so moving on to our regular agenda item, we have our vehicle miles traveled project kickoff.
Thank you, Chair Fritz, or Vice Chair Fritz, Chair tonight. The, so this is a project regarding setting vehicle miles traveled thresholds for the city of Sebastopol as well as looking at potential mitigations. And to explain all that, we actually have Ian Barnes with us from Farron Peers. He's going to go over what is VMT, all of that other good stuff for you. And Ian, I'm actually going to invite you to, I'm going to grab the chair next to Kathy and invite you to come up here for your presentation. And while we're doing that, I will note that this is a pretty quick project. We are paying for this with a state grant. And so we are anticipating doing the kickoff tonight and getting any input that you all have. Ian will go over the schedule, but it, we are anticipating adoption by the end of this year, so.
Fantastic. Do we have the PowerPoint up?
I apologize, I'll have the slideshow up in just a second. I'm just... Let me just reopen it.
related to climate change, starting back in 2006 with Assembly Bill 32, going through Senate Bill 97, which added greenhouse gas analysis to SEQA, SB 375, which set climate targets set at the MPO level or Metropolitan Planning Organization level, and on and on and on now to saying, well, we need to change the way that we look at transportation analysis for projects in the state to, in order to align that process with our climate targets in the state. So the legislative intent of Senate Bill 743 is very important. The first part is basically what I noted about realigning traffic analysis to reflect the environment and making sure that the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA actually does what it's supposed to do. But then the second part is about balancing congestion management with goals related to promoting infill development, promotion of public health through active transportation, walking and biking instead of driving, and then the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions relative to our legislated targets. The legislative intent of the law is very important because if there is a SEQA challenge to a VMT analysis, that's where judges are going to be looking to establish adequacy findings. There we go. So this slide and the next slide are kind of a, two halves of the coin. So what SB 743 did is it eliminated level of service and delay metrics, so kind of that grade A through F that you may be familiar with, as a metric to identify a significant impact. So congestion-related effects are automatically now less than significant under SEQA. Instead of now doing level of service and delay, it explicitly added vehicle miles of travel as the metric to evaluate a project's transportation impact. So for the first time in SEQA, the state took away a metric and installed one of its own. So that's kind of groundbreaking there. Going on to the next slide, but SB 743 didn't change a lot of things. It just changed a few paragraphs in SEQA. And so doesn't change your, does not change general plan law, traffic impact fee programs, your AB 1600 fee, things like obviously the state constitution, the subdivision map act. And another way to look at that is agencies can still put conditions of approval on projects, including making modifications to the circulation system in response to general plan goals and policies related to the operations of the circulation system. So the city can still require congestion analysis and require developments to make improvements, but just that analysis can no longer live in the SEQA document, which was a traditional way of handling that. And, oh, yes, and so one other thing too, for SEQA transportation analysis, it specifically excludes the VMT generated by goods movement, agricultural mining, and basically economic activity. This is about doing VMT analysis about where people live, trying to get people out of their cars for their commute trips, but not penalizing an industry for generating trips related to economic activity. So the OPR guidelines and the SEQA guidelines now are in alignment that VMT is the most appropriate measure of transportation impacts, and it should be used everywhere in the state. There was originally back in the mid-2010s, a proposal to maybe limit the use of VMT to the cores of metro areas like San Francisco, Oakland, Los Angeles, but it does apply statewide. Land use projects within low VMT areas can bypass the need to be analyzed for VMT. You can screen them out, which is basically presuming a less than significant impact on the basis of VMT. And for active transportation projects and transit projects, they should be presumed to have a less than significant transportation impact in most cases.
Right, and Ian, actually, when we were talking about this, noted that you could have something like a crosswalk installed that's going to create vehicle delay because people have to stop and wait for that. And in the level of service, which is a metric that's all about delay, vehicle delay, you would actually have an environmental impact from doing a crosswalk. So this, this VMT changes that. It's less about vehicle delay, which of course you can build your way out of by just building wider and wider roads, and more about how you do development related to the climate and focusing more on the infill. And so that was a really interesting example, to me at least, about, oh, SEQA, you could have actually complained about that, a crosswalk, and had a point until this changed.
Yeah. And I think Carrie put it very well. This law changed SEQA traffic analysis from measuring the impacts to drivers to now measuring the environmental impacts of driving caused by a project. So that's kind of the, if you take nothing else, that's that statement. Great. So you may have been familiar with VMT previously in readings, other SEQA sections, air quality, greenhouse gas, and energy were three SEQA topic areas that had VMT as an input. In those cases, you look at all the VMT generated by a project. But now for Senate Bill 743 transportation analysis, because we're not looking to penalize economic development and we're trying to focus residential and employment development in areas that are more environmentally efficient, we only look at some of the VMT in there for the traffic analysis, which can be a little confusing, but it's, there is still some tie between these analyses areas. And so the law did raise new methodology questions, and as I was saying, looking at different types of VMT for different land uses. So for residential, we're looking at the VMT associated with all trips with a start or end at a home. For office, it's the VMT generated by workers, so your commute trips. For retail, it may be exempt, a project may be exempt if it's 50,000 square feet or less. A lot of agencies change that, and I know, I, from what we've heard from staff, that number would likely go down to something a little bit more manageable. And so if it meet, if it meets with the state guidance, that 50,000 square foot criteria, it's local serving, so it does not, it can, does not need to be analyzed. But if it's a larger retail project or it's not local serving, you look at the net change in VMT. So that's when you look at that total VMT number. That last bullet point there is very important. The city is a lead agency under SEQA and has the discretion to set thresholds and analysis requirements for other project types as well. Just for residential, office, or employment uses and retail, the state provided non-binding guidance, but pretty strong guidance of how to look at VMT and slice and dice the VMT for those land uses. In addition to changing the way that we look at transportation impacts with VMT, it also, the law also changed the SEQA checklist. So before, there were seven questions, now it's down to four. And that question B, which looks a little legalese, that's where, that's the actual section of the SEQA guidelines where they talk about VMT, and that's the checklist question that needs to be answered for VMT.
So, and I'm just going to read this because they realize the screen, at least I can't see that.
Yeah.
The, so what he's showing is, like, we have a checklist of all the potential SEQA impacts for, that we go through when we go through projects that aren't exempt. And under transportation, there is a, A, does it conflict with plans, ordinance, or policies addressing the circulation system in your community that is still valid? But B is, would the project conflict or be inconsistent with SEQA Guideline Section 15064.3 subdivision B? So that is the VMT requirement that is being added in. It just isn't really obvious from the language. And I think when we do our checklist, we'll probably add parentheses VMT.
Yeah, that one has tricked up many Planning Commission and many other agencies over these years, but yep, that's the VM, that's the VMT question going forward. All right, so now hopping into OPR's guidance for thresholds. These are non-binding, but as, as you, as you know, SEQA is based on evidence, and based on the evidence that the Governor's Office of Planning and Research had put together back in 2018, effective 2020, they are suggesting a threshold of 15% below baseline conditions, baseline being defined as when the NOP for a project is released.
No acronyms.
Oh, sorry. Notice of preparation. Sorry, the SEQA, State Office of Planning and Research. Sorry, I'm a traffic engineer, we love our acronyms. Yeah. And, and what that means is for residential and employment projects, that 15% number below what's happening today is really what OPR is recommending, sorry, Office of Planning and Research is recommending. But that second part about the baseline conditions being set when the notice of preparation is released is also very important. That means that the baseline rolls forward over time. So your VMT baseline for a project today might be different a year from now, two years from now. And we have seen some environmental documents caught up a little bit by deferring the baseline because of COVID. And so, you know, you'd, you'd see a lot of documents go back to pre-pandemic conditions. That argument is starting to wash away as we've, you know, hit three-plus years after the pandemic started. As I noted there, sorry, the thresholds in the state technical advisory are non-binding and jurisdictions can develop their own, subject to the evidence requirements of SEQA. Most agencies are going to OPR.
Right, and so, you know, 15% is pretty defensible because the state has basically said 15% is good. You can be more strict, and I believe Petaluma changed theirs to be a little bit more strict, and some other communities are doing that.
Yeah, that might actually be a good segue into the next slide, where while the city absolutely has lead agency discretion, there are other factors to consider such as the consistency with your general plan, the role of the California Air Resources Board, which monitors the progress of greenhouse gases emitted by the state. That's where initially they came up with a number of 16.8% instead of 15%. That is ultimately what Petaluma adopted instead of the 15% number. Also need to consider again the legislative intent of law, the consistency with how VMT is measured for air quality, energy, and greenhouse gas analysis. That's where the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMUD, can sometimes, can sometimes exert some influence in this. And then also, does the agency value certain types of VMT over others? And that's a bit of a tricky one there, but that's, you know, basically saying, do we want to prioritize, say, neighborhood retail versus formula retail? And I know that that's, that's, that's a, that's a very broad topic, and I'm not saying that's specific to Sebastopol, but that's a, that's a frequent conversation there. And then what will the courts decide? There's an old saying in SEQA that it's not really SEQA until a court decides on it, and there haven't been many challenges on VMT yet, but they are starting to come down the pipeline. So taking everything about the 15%, the types of VMT, can they consider now rolling it into suggested thresholds from the state? For residential projects, it would be 15% below the existing city or regional averaged home-based VMT per capita. So how much VMT does your residential dwelling unit generate dividing by the number of residents to make it an efficiency metric? Sorry.
So and just to, because my brain, I don't do numbers well, so like, the example I would give of that is, say, you have a 10-unit development with two people per unit, so that's 20 people. If you had that, say, where the habitat for your many townhomes were in the middle of town, across from the grocery store, a block from downtown, and a block from the high school, versus that same 10-unit development 20 miles outside of town, you can kind of think about how many vehicle, how many miles people would travel, you know, for the total of that development, if it's right downtown Sebastopol versus 20 miles in, you know, outside of town. And so that's, that's really what this is kind of talking about.
Yeah.
Then does it take the average for the community based on the numbers that you've already found and expect that new development to be 15% below that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So for residential, there is an option in there. That is to use either the existing citywide average or the regional average. And regional is a bit of a loaded word. OPR, or State Office of Planning and Research, actually had to prepare a FAQ document online, which explicitly noted that regional in this context, because we're dealing with climate targets, is the Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary, which for Sebastopol is the nine-county MTC region. For other counties in the state like Mendocino or Stanislaus or San Joaquin, because they're single-county MPOs, the countywide average is the regional average for them. So a bit of nuance there. That choice can have implications on how, how difficult it is for a project to proceed under a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR in those cases. Office is a little bit more straightforward or employment-focused uses. That's 15% below existing regional average commute VMT per employee. So how far does the average commuter have to go? And that's, and the idea behind that is placing employment in locations to, you know, address the jobs, housing imbalance, closer to transit, those sorts of ideas there. And then for retail, it's no net increase in total VMT. And we'll get a little bit further down the line why that is and why that metric is a little bit different than for residential and office or employment. So as I was noting, for citywide, for residential projects, which is the table on the left, there is a bit of a choice here, and there are some implications about that. So it's a little bit hard to see there, but in the middle of the table, beyond that Sonoma County average line--
Sorry, I'm just going to try to zoom in a little bit.
There we go. So Sebastopol, Sebastopol is just a little bit above the county average, it's 17.1 VMT per resident, whereas the Bay Area region's at 15.5. So projects, so if a citywide average was chosen instead of the regional average, there'd be a little bit more leeway for projects just because the average, the existing average is higher. For a smaller city like Sebastopol, that's actually very important because the modeling tools used for that, the Sonoma County travel model, is, it's a very big tool, but it only has so much detail within the city. So what we have seen is when agencies go for the regional average and they're in this situation, it can be very difficult to screen projects out of the VMT analysis with that, especially projects that, you know, in the center of town, that generally speaking would be more amenable to screening out.
Right, and just a word on this, I mean, obviously, the region has a lower vehicle mile per travel because vehicle, miles traveled on transit, like BART, Caltrans, AC Transit, you know, places that, smart. So places that have that transit, those miles aren't counted. So anyone, when you get to the heart of the Bay Area and people have mass transit available, their VMT is, as you can see, is generally going to be lower versus a more rural area where we don't have those options. And so that's most of why our VMT is higher than the county average or the Bay Area average.
And another item that sometimes decision-makers typically point out is, at least with the city average, you have the ability to-- So if a citywide average was chosen, instead of the regional average, there'd be a little bit more leeway for projects just because the average, the existing average is higher. For a smaller city like Sebastopol, that's actually very important because the modeling tools used for that, the Sonoma County travel model, is, it's a very big tool, but it only has so much detail within the city. So what we have seen is when agencies go for the regional average and they're in this situation, it can be very difficult to screen projects out of the VMT analysis with that, especially projects that, you know, in the center of town, that generally speaking would be more amenable to screening out.
Right. And just a word on this, I mean, obviously, the region has a lower vehicle mile per travel because vehicle, miles traveled on transit, like BART, Caltrans, AC Transit, you know, places that, smart. So places that have that transit, those miles aren't counted. So anyone, when you get to the heart of the Bay Area and people have mass transit available, their VMT is, as you can see, is generally going to be lower versus a more rural area where we don't have those options. And so that's most of why our VMT is higher than the county average or the Bay Area average.
And another item that sometimes decision-makers typically point out is, at least with the city average, you have the ability to control that a bit more through your own policymaking processes rather than being beholden to what others in the county or others in the region are doing. For employment, which is on the right table there, while there is no option for, you know, to choose, or theoretically, the city could choose citywide or regional. As a lead agency, you can do that, but the Bay Area regional number is so high that in a lot of cases, a lot of agencies in Sonoma County are finding that most of their areas where they might be trying to look for new employment land uses are just going to screen out because they're already 15% below the regional average there. So that's a unique quirk of some of the North Bay counties versus as you get towards the center of the Bay, that actually becomes a little bit more difficult. Typically, people tend to focus on the land use projects, but transportation projects, as we were noting, are covered under SB 743. Bicycle, pedestrian, and transit projects are generally presumed to not increase VMT, getting people onto their bikes or walking instead of their cars. But projects that expand roadway capacity, like adding through lanes on 116 or 12, just for example, would be considered to cause induced demand, and thus you would need to look at VMT effects of inducing demand. And for those, while it says that thresholds of significance are not specified, if you take the Caltrans guidance, any increase in VMT associated with induced demand would require mitigation. So a couple of examples of screening. This one's a little bit tough for Sebastopol because when we talk about transit priority areas, that's around major rail stations, like a smart station, unfortunately, or locations where buses run at 15 minutes or better frequencies, which unfortunately, not there just yet. But in these cases, you could make the argument that people are going to take transit, thus you could screen them out, provided that certain development criteria were met related to density and not providing a ton of parking around the sites, those sorts of things. But the one that's maybe a little bit more applicable here to Sebastopol is screening in low VMT generating areas. Now, this is a map of Fairfield that I have up there because I think it illustrates kind of the bull's eye effect, if you will, here very well that for residential developments in particular near the center of towns, where there is shopping, commercial, schools, those areas tend to perform better in terms of being in a lower VMT generating area versus development on the outskirts of the city. So SCTA has produced screening maps for all of its member agencies, and MTC has done that as well for agencies throughout the Bay Area. But we just wanted to put up this map here just as an example for that kind of concentric ring bull's eye effect. So if you do need to go do a VMT analysis, how do you do that? How do you measure this nebulous metric? And so the way that it's a little bit easy to conceptualize it is volume times distance or trips times trip length. If you have one car that drives 10 miles, 1 times 10, 10 VMT. Four cars driving 10 miles, 40 VMT. How we measure it? The CEQA guidelines and the Office of Planning and Research have strongly recommended the use of travel models to forecast and track trips and to track the VMT. So for here in Sebastopol, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority model is your local model, covers the entire county. The other option is the MTC nine-county model, usually not used here because it's so big and doesn't have a ton of detail.
And I will note, usually when I go to meetings with Aberg, oftentimes, they cut off the top half of Sonoma County. So yeah, their focus is just so broad, but SCTA, Sonoma County Transportation Authority works really closely. I attend monthly meetings with them, as does our city engineer. He goes to a technical advisory, I go to a planning advisory committee meeting. And Fairan Peers actually did the travel model for Sonoma County, so we have a lot of expertise in here in that he knows kind of what a lot of the issues are for Sebastopol, but also Sonoma County as a bigger whole.
Yeah. So again, volume times distance or trips by trip length using these travel demand model tools, which forecast the volumes on each segment of roadway in the model. The models generally cover all of the arterials, all the state highways. Sonoma County actually has a lot of detail in their model so that we're reasonably tracking the lengths of trips. Back in the day, there were a couple of different competing methods of how to do VMT. The method that the state has, the method that the state has recommended is called the origin destination method. That's where if you have a particular project, you look at all the VMT being generated by or being attracted to that use. Again, for, just for illustrational purposes here, this is City of Citrus Heights because it kind of has the bull's eye pattern again, where you see a lot of VMT within the city, and then as it starts to spread out on the freeways, those lines get smaller. So the number there isn't as important. There was another slide back in the day for a different method that showed that the numbers were actually very different, but this is the method that pretty much all consultants use now for addressing VMT. There are some other considerations, though, that may come up from time to time. The technical advisory does not, provides a little bit of comment on mixed-use projects, and there are a few options there whereby you can look at each of the uses and take credit for their interaction with one another. Unique projects, there'll be a slide in here for IKEA, something that does not fit well in the model. But as you can, as you might imagine, it definitely has some unique characteristics there. Redevelopment projects are handled a little bit differently than some of these other projects. And then the other ones that we usually get a lot of questions on up here are wineries and hotels, a little bit beyond the topic for today, but there's no, while there's not explicit guidance in the technical advisory, you can use some of the principles in the technical advisory and extrapolate them to those more specialized land uses. While travel models are great, I love them, they are fun to use, it's fun to go and see the computer do their thing. Office of Planning and Research did note that big data, so cell phone data, can be really beneficial for unique land uses or uses where the travel model's just not really set up to do that. So this is the IKEA example where we used big data to track where people were coming from and going to for the Emeryville IKEA, to basically start establishing that pattern because no travel model was ever going to get down to the granularity we really needed to do for an IKEA. And then to make things even more complicated, this is, as alluded to with the retail, in a lot of cases for residential and for employment, we're going to be looking at the VMT being generated by the project. But retail is looked at a little bit differently. We're looking at the effect of the project. So if we hit the next slide, the next slide here, if you can imagine, there are three neighborhoods, and there's only one grocery store in the purple neighborhood. So everybody from the orange neighborhood and the blue neighborhood need to go travel to the purple neighborhood to go get their groceries. If we had a supermarket project come in, if we want to advance to the next slide, in the blue neighborhood, that supermarket generates VMT, but the net effect of that supermarket, because now the blue neighborhood doesn't have to go across town, you'd actually find a VMT decrease. So that's why the retail analysis is done on the basis of zero net new VMT, because they want to try and encourage projects like those. So let's just say you happen to have a significant impact and you need mitigation. As I like to say, that means you're going to be looking to either reduce the V or the M, so reducing the number of trips or the trip length. The state, the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association, CAPCOA, has a, now a second edition of a guidebook that helps quantify the VMT-reducing effects of transportation demand management measures, such as parking pricing, or, you know, density of projects, mix of projects, transit passes, those sorts of things. So this is our primary tool to understand that if a site is going to be implementing certain mitigation measures, what's the net effect of that as we try and reduce the impact down to a less insignificant level? SCTA also, sorry, do you want to go to the next slide? It's really hard to see up there. It's an Excel-based tool that Sonoma County Transportation Authority did put together for use by its member agencies that ties into the travel model. And this tool allows analysts to apply those methodologies to see how much certain measures reduce VMT, and also, as importantly, calculate out kind of the law of diminishing effects as you add strategies on. So this tool will be updated as the underlying methodology changes, but this is a tool that SCTA has put forward for its member agencies in addition to the model.
Right. And on this, you can kind of see, you know, some of these are options in our community, some aren't, like locate project in an area with low VMT. We do have areas, so the city of Sebastopol, we did not reveal this map to you today. No. There are areas in Sebastopol that have lower VMTs than others. I mean, you can just kind of imagine the community, if you're out on the west side of town, coming into a school is going to be a longer trip than if you live on Vine Street, say. So locating an area, project in an area with low existing VMT, locate the project near transit. We do, although we don't have major transit, we do have bus lines along Bodega and 116. Increasing the project density, that's, you know, having it be a more, the sparse development. Increasing the mix of uses within a project, so if you had, you know, something that's residential and something that serves a residential, say, a grocery store, and I've actually lived close to a Trader Joe's that was considering having housing on top in Oakland, you know, that's, you don't have to go far to go to the grocery store, do you? So that can have an impact. And then the increased connectivity is really more of the cities, you know, when we look at development, making sure that they, and actually, this goes to our objective design standards we were reviewing earlier this year, or earlier today, of, you know, when you look at a large project, is it like a Rite Aid or Redwood Marketplace with the huge parking lot, or is it more of a walkable? Does it, like those, you know, Redwood Marketplace does not go through to the neighborhood behind, but it does via bike paths? Can you do that, that type of thing to make it easier for people to get around?
Go ahead and go to the next slide there. And so those project alternatives, you know, that's really mitigating at the site level for each individual project. There are other strategies that can be done at the general plan level or the citywide level where they're actually very, much more effective as you kind of increase the population, which would be using those. So, you know, thinking about the general plan and the zoning pattern, about putting the growth in areas with low existing VMT, locating the land use growth near transit if possible, increasing allowable project densities, allowing a greater mix of uses, and then, again, going back in and at the general plan level now, thinking about the circulation system, about connectivity and density for both the roadway system and the bicycle and pedestrian system as well. There is that bottom slide point, and that is the concept of VMT mitigation banks and fees, which have really started to take off as, maybe calling it a silver bullet is a bit too much, but it's really hard to mitigate on a project-by-project basis. And so using in-lu fees or a regional banking system administered, say, through SCTA, to pool funds together and to implement larger-scale VMT-reducing projects is the way that things are going. And I know that SCTA staff aren't here, but I know that they have put in a Caltrans planning grant application to develop a bank program for member agencies in Sonoma County. Other counties in the Bay Area that have done it or that are doing it include Contra Costa, Santa Clara, and San Mateo. So this project is really starting to, these types of projects are starting to take off.
Right. And that's, will be part of this project's discussion, too. Are there projects within Sebastopol that could, would help reduce VMT, but we would need funding through this kind of a, it's, you know, it's sort of like the cap-and-trade concept of the mitigation bank and fees, is that you pay into it, but then that supports projects that help lower VMT.
I think that's the end of the presentation. It's a lot, and it, I will just note that, you know, it did, the law did flip 75 years of transportation planning practice on its head, going back from the post-war period all the way to 2020. So it is the most transformative change, at least in California, transportation planning since, you know, we started to mass-produce the automobile. So have fun, it's fun to grapple with that fact there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So I guess my first question is just, what is the sort of desired outcome of today's meeting? Are we going to get into the details of what, you know, we want to do in terms of approaching the mitigation measures or thresholds and things like that? Or is this just kind of presentation and just question?
Sorry, so it's mostly presentation, but Ian, I think, I mean, if people have comments and some of the direction, I think that would be great to help us on our way. So I think, yeah.
Absolutely. If there's anything in the presentation that, you know, elicited a vibe, or, you know, I know we were talking about, you know, there was that 50,000 number and taking it down for retail projects, giving some guidance there, or, you know, what I have seen commissions do is, you know, ask staff to do a little bit of research and investigation to the typical types of projects that come through on the retail front and try and work down to those numbers. I've seen that 50,000 number come down to 30,000, 20,000, Healdsburg's thinking 10,000 for general retail, but 30,000 for grocery store. You know, there's a lot of different ways to slice and dice that number coming down from 50 to a more city-appropriate number.
And I guess could we just go through, like, so you said they're trying to finish this up by the end of the year, so what is the overall kind of process of what's happening in terms of meetings or decision-making and implementation?
Sure. So, yeah, so we are going to be working with Ian on this and basically wanting to take input from the Planning Commission. Again, if we can get that tonight, mostly it's like, hey, what is VMT? Let's make sure everyone understands because it's incredibly, I mean, it's incredibly simple concept, but as Ian talked about, like even the transportation consultants had sort of the war of how they're going to calculate it and what exactly it means and how it's done. For us, moving forward, so kind of what I see is, you know, the state has a 15%. I wouldn't want to go below that because that opens us up to a lot of potential exposure to say, oh, yeah, no, 10% is fine. The 15% or low, more stringent is more what people are doing. Input, and, you know, we can actually kind of maybe go through some of these slides and get input after, you know, the commission's input to date. I know we're missing our chair tonight, but I can always talk with him as well and make sure he watches the video to get some initial input or questions that you want staff to look into in terms of, yeah, like Ian said, you know, what's the typical retail size? Like, you know, the exchange bank was x square feet and that kind of a thing, to kind of help you understand what the different dynamics are. So for me, the percentage, the percentages below VMT, we need to select whether or not for the home-based, it would be the city level or the regional level. I would say confirm that for the office, we want to go with the regional level. And then for the retail level of screening out, is there a sense tonight on square footage? And then I think we'll probably get a little bit, you know, we won't talk about potential mitigations or projects or ways in the city to reduce VMT, like, you know, when the concept of mitigation bank was first proposed at SCTA, I was like, oh, I know for sure that Sebastopol won't want to pay into something if they don't have projects in that pool as well because they, Sebastopol, and that's not because of a selfishness, it's because of the unofficial chamber motto, I guess, which was the think globally, act locally, is that they're really going to want to see reduction of VMT in town, right? They're going to want to see, do something locally as part of those projects. So that's kind of my sense of where council and the commission would want to go with that. But if, you know, if there are projects like the bicycle lanes that we installed... would want to go with that. But if, you know, if there are projects like the bicycle lanes that we installed, crosswalks, other, other things that would actually be, and this is where Ian can help us, is that sort of a regional-level mitigation bank kind of a project, so that when SCTA does develop that, we have some thoughts about what those projects might be to add to that. That's kind of the later stages of it. The first is making sure everyone understands VMT. And again, we can still use level of service, particularly when we're reviewing a project and the specific site circulation around that project. So like for Woodmark, we did an analysis of trips coming out of that site. It's right at the Robinson-Bodega intersection. Is that going to, do we need a traffic light? Do we need a crosswalk? What do we need there to make sure that the, the intersection is safe, but also that it's not causing undue delay? We can still do that level of analysis for that project. We are adding, you know, they're adding a crosswalk, but for this, is that kind of higher-level CEQA stuff? Where do we want to go in terms of, you know, do you have to do a traffic analysis for the trip, trip generation kind of stuff and the vehicle length of trips? It's kind of how I think about that. That's probably not entirely correct there, but that part of it.
Yeah, definitely close enough. Usually where we see the most deviation, and I think as Carrie was noting, was 15% number for residential projects, city versus regional, and for employment, does regional make sense? And then the, the retail screening criteria, what number feel, what number or what range of numbers make, make sense to look at, because it's always tough to pare down to a number here in a meeting without further research.
So, okay, I'm sorry, again, just, so we're going to have this meeting tonight, and I'm assuming this is going to be a similar kind of presentation to the council at some point, and then will you come back to us with like the final, like this is the package of how we're going to adopt this, or?
Yeah, and so, yes, so, you know, we're having some of these introductory meetings, because it's such a deep topic, and get some initial feedback, then we will circle back with city staff, have some discussions internally. And then, yes, this would go back to planning commission and a council for formal adoption. That's a very key step for CEQA, because all general use thresholds of significance need to be adopted by ordinance or resolution by the council. So we will be coming back with recommendations. It'd be great to get some initial input tonight, but there would need to be a little bit more research done tonight and some technical memoranda developed to supplement that.
Right, thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I have a question. I guess it's theoretical, but maybe not. This is a lot about greenhouse gases and the environment as much as the numbers of cars on the street. And I understand totally putting things together so the cars don't have to travel so far to get their thing accomplished, including the economy. But as cars become more environmentally clean through electricity, and electricity is cleaner, how does that affect this? I mean, does that get factored in to, we're still trying to keep the cars from moving, because everything generates heat and congestion, so how does that balance out?
So for now, and probably through at least the end of the decade, if I was to speculate, you know, the percent, the mode share that's electric vehicles and hybrids is still dwarfed by gas-concentrating SUVs and trucks in a lot of cases. And so for right now, the law does not recommend divvying up by traction power, electric versus, versus gas versus diesel. To the degree that the fleet mix does change, that would be captured in the greenhouse gas section of CEQA related to the pollutant emissions. Versus for the transportation section, we're really looking at the intersection of the land use pattern and the transportation system to align CEQA and to give an easier pass for projects in CEQA that are located in areas where people are more likely to walk and bike, or the, the likelihood to drive is less because there's alternative options. So, or another way to think of it was, it used to be really hard to put residential near BART stations, because it'd be very congested and under a level of service. You just have really bad CEQA impacts. Now it's flipped around.
Right, and, and so Commissioner Ottinger, there are sort of other, I agree with you, certainly the transition to EVs is, is considering. I'm assuming this 15% OPR level does have some accounting for that at that kind of macro level. And I know our Climate Action Committee is actually trying to track the, the percentage or the number of electric vehicles in the city and how that progresses over time. The DMV actually tracks that, so there are metrics there. But I think just, you know, in the big picture, being able to walk or bicycle versus a vehicle, even if it's an EV, there's a lot of emissions related to either the production of energy, the, all of the, you know, the consumables that come with that, that, just in terms of the mass production of that and the energy and the greenhouse gas that goes into that. So just, you know, cars were out, bicycles were out too, but probably not the same kind of environmental impact to produce a bicycle. And it sort of goes back, I mean, solar panels aren't all that great for the environment, too. And so that, I remember that discussion like 15 years ago. So it's, it's a little bit the same in that. That's not really what's being accounted for in the vehicle mile travel, but I think that's sort of from that kind of macro level of how you're looking at it. And, you know, this is really, I think I included the number of general plan components that we have that look to, just in the transportation section, but there's a lot of other components of our general plan that do talk about walkable and bikeable communities and things like that. And so this kind of, it's, it's all kind of the same thing, going toward the same goal of this, you know, a smaller town where you can walk it, or have that as an option, or bike, have that as an option based on where, where we're doing future development.
From what you're saying, overall, it's hard to see that this has any effect at all on what our little town does. It's, I don't think it's ever going to stop anything or change anything, or get a skyhook to get people off across Bodega Avenue. I just, seems like a lot of, of good effort toward, toward a goal, and I just don't think it'll ever change anything. I can't see it changing anything. Am I wrong?
I, sorry, go, go ahead.
No, I was just going to toss in, I think it's interesting to look at, like, you talked about like the idea of, you know, the bullseye and things like close-in, like a way to encourage more development in the places that are already walkable, kind of oriented places. And I think that that can, you know, we can still do that. I think that that needs to be coupled with other policy changes. We can't just, just do that and expect people to start developing downtown. I think it's a way to, you know, helps them get through their CEQA documentation for a project like the Habitat Project or whatever kind of project might be proposed downtown, but I think there's still other policies we need to look at that would make that even more, you know, really further encourage that kind of development, like, you know, parking requirements and things like that. You know, there's still a lot of things that we do beyond VMT that will help push that development and help reduce our overall impact.
And our Climate Action Committee has been looking at some of those policies. For instance, they did look at the, sort of the scooter share program kind of a thing. But after vetting that with some of the, the suppliers of those, they actually came to, well, you know, what we really actually need more is a bicycle share program or an e-bike share program, just because we have enough topography and we have a good system of trails to get from one side of town to the other in some areas. So they are actually continuing to look at other programs like that that would also help, because, you know, it's great to have a bunch of bicycle lanes, but, you know, if you are coming in from Santa Rosa on a bus, but you have that last mile between the bus and where you need to get to for your job, and there's no link, are you going to take the bus? Or are you going to just take your car because it's easier? And, I mean, I have been a kind of a super commuter in the past, using, I mean, literally more than 50 miles each way, kind of a thing. And I've used the airport or express to get to a job in South San Francisco, coupled with a local bus, and it was pretty constrained on my schedule in terms of when I had to be where. And so it's very difficult for that. So there's, you know, there are components of that that could actually, yes, and other policies certainly help, along with obviously locating jobs close to where the bus drives do come in.
You go ahead.
I was just curious. I was just curious how you take into account, like, a hotel. So obviously, the hotel that is going to be in downtown is going to have less VMAs, because they can walk to the restaurants, they could walk to the movie theater as opposed to the one that's outside of town. But, you know, how do you look at those tourists, you know, because then they're going to go to the wineries and they're going to go to Healdsburg to eat, and they might go to San Francisco.
I knew this question was coming.
You know, any presentations?
Yeah, no, it's, it's wineries hotels, who's going to come first? And actually, the, the answer is actually somewhat similar to both, for both. So let's just say for these types of uses in general, there's going to be an employment component of that use. And you look at that employee VMT using the employee VMT threshold. But then you would look at that visitor VMT like you would, at least here in Senoma County thus far, it's being looked at as a kind of, under that retail, how much driving is occurring because of that? And, you know, for hotels, are you adding a hotel in an underserved area or an overserved area? The other important thing, we didn't get too deep into this, because it's beyond the scope of this presentation, gets deep into the methodology, is there is an expectation that you track the full lengths of your trips. You cannot just cut the trip, the trip lengths off at the county line, for example. And that's why VMT for hotel, or big data and cellphone data for hotel projects, wineries, tasting rooms is so important, because you need to capture all that VMT associated with the project, not just for transportation analysis, but also to seed your air quality, greenhouse gas and energy analyses. And, you know, those, those areas are subject to comment and review by the public as well.
Come up here and they'll go to the river, they'll go to San Francisco, they'll go to winery. So that's out of the scope of our area, but it's still causing, you know, greenhouse gas, climate emissions, and it's still part of our, the, I mean, it just, how do you, yeah.
And so, yeah, so you would still be.
And sorry, but I was also wondering, could that have potentially, I guess we don't have the many hotels yet, but if you look at like visitors, will that make your VMT go up in your city, and does that get harder to control?
That's a, that's a very, that's a very tough question. You know, visitor VMT is tied back to the land uses in a lot of cases. We're talking about that origin destination method, trips that just pass through your city and don't stop anywhere. Let's say they're going from Cotati to the Russian River on 116. Those are just ignored in the calculation, because they're not interacting with any land uses there. So, yes, so for a hotel project, yeah, we would be looking at the VMT going to wineries or their trip to the hotel from SFO or the Peanuts Airport, as I like to call it. And so, yeah, we, we do try and track all that VMT, because that's ultimately what CEQA requires for a defensible analysis.
So I'm wondering if we should go back through the, the key slides and get some feedback on.
Is there any more general questions, or just make sure, we do have some members of the public, just to make sure there's no public comment before you start providing?
Deliberating, okay. Yeah, that's fine, okay. So we will open this item for members of the public. If you would like to speak to this, please raise your virtual or actual hand in your screen.
Okay, and we do have Kyle Falbow. And then we have one person after that.
Hey, thanks. So I, I'm really impressed to see, like, improvements or just transformation of the way that we're measuring vehicles. I love that there's mathematical models for happening in the background behind all of this, and it feels like an improvement. But I have to agree that, at the end of the day, especially when it comes to housing, that automobile-centric housing is a self-fulfilling prophecy. And until we commit to looking at alternative housing models and alternative housing solutions that aren't focused on a car, a garage, a driveway, a parking space, because to me, it seems like that's the entire conversation about housing and has been for a very long time, then, until we're able to do that, then we're just going to be spinning around in circles and giving lip service to a new metric that really won't create any sort of actual impact. So I appreciate identifying that, but let's get to the work of actually modifying our objective standards in such a way that will actually reduce the amount of automobile-centric housing that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Will, you want to unmute yourself?
Shit, fuck, cunt, shit.
Okay, so we'll have our tech folks remove that person. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I think we're good.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, do you want to go bend through the slides that you want some discussion on or feedback on?
Great, so the, one of the first major questions that come up is 15% versus another number. For context, a lot of agencies have adopted the 15% number. So a handful have adopted 16.8. And with the understanding that, you know, requiring 16.8 could increase the number of environmental impact reports that need to be prepared versus a 15%, and then having, beyond that, just, you know, making it harder for projects to screen out. There are some cases in some smaller cities where 16.8 is such a large drop, that in fact, no areas of the city can actually qualify for screening, because it's such a big drop versus the grand average across the city.
I think pert and parcel of that is what, for the home-based, whether you use the city level or the Bay Area region, because obviously those are different, going to be different as well.
Yeah. So there is also one other consideration there. And that is, again, as, as I know, just the control over the, the metric number there, if it's the city average or the regional average. There are some agencies in the county that have adopted the county-wide average, but you could theoretically down the line, because it's a rolling baseline, run into a situation where those rows in the table flip, where the county-wide average is actually higher than the city-wide average, and now your threshold isn't defensible versus the OPR guidance. And so we have actually, we haven't been able to talk about this yet, but we did see an example in Southern California where that did occur in Orange County and got a major EIR. It was going to be an MND, then it got kicked into an EIR because of a swap in how those numbers lined up, so.
Right, and so, you know, the, obviously, these two numbers interact. I think from my perspective, it feels like just using the city VMT is the easier way to do that, than we're basically looking at, okay, if we have, for home-based trips, 17.1 vehicle miles per resident, so that's something that you can actually grasp. Okay, every, if you take every resident of Sebastopol, they're driving 17.1 miles a day. That's a day, right? Yeah. Can we get that number down by 15%, 16%? You know, that's, to me, that's a little bit easier to grasp than doing Bay Area region, where you kind of think about all those other varied factors. So for me, Steph, I would recommend using the city. I think it'll be more of a challenge to the city to see, hey, can we get it below that, you know, how much below our own threshold can we get it? And not be comparing ourselves to a region that has a lot of different transit and other dynamics. And then focus on, you know, 15%, 16%, what do you want to do there?
That number adjusted.
Yeah, so because it is a rolling baseline, what analysts typically do is we look at the, and I'm going to use this technical term, and it can be a little bit confusing, the base year of the model, which for Senoma County is 2019, and the future year of the model, 2040, and interpolate to the year of that. The model is updated about every five years, so Senoma County is going to be updating their model, I believe, starting fiscal next year, so fiscal year 24, 25 is, I know, you're telling me. And, and so the model is fairly well, well-maintained in terms of And, and so the model is fairly well, well maintained in terms of land use changes, transportation network changes. So you're really using each version of that model for only five years at a time before it gets an update. So next year, will the model be a little bit long in the tooth? Eh, potentially, but it's still, in my opinion, the best available tool that we have.
And I think it will be helpful when they do that because it will be long enough after COVID. So when we did the model in 2019, everyone goes, oh, 2019, wait a second, that's not right. We actually, Fair and Pierce actually did, and we as the planning directors worked to make sure we had metrics that were pre-COVID and, you know, made sense in terms of the different seasonalities as well. Knowing that we have both ag workers and tourist season, and then we have schools on the other season. And so all that data was taken into account pre-COVID for the model.
Correct.
Yeah, so it'll be kind of the post-COVID. And I would imagine with the work from home and hybrid schedules, that there probably be some sort of shift at that point.
And everyone's getting older, we're an aging community still, I think.
Sebastopol is, yeah, and I'm not sure how that impacts travel.
I'm not going to comment on that because, but what I would say is to the degree that there are those factors, when the models get updated, we do incorporate big data. We do have to recalibrate the model back to new traffic counts, new travel patterns, and really make sure that the model is at least, you know, for the base year, serving as a good replicator of the conditions out there within the bounds imposed on us by the state.
I think I tend to agree with Kerry on the city, using the citywide versus the regional numbers. In terms of the 15% versus 16.8%, I don't know if I feel strongly about it. I mean, I'm kind of inclined to go with the 15% just to not make it too extra onerous, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's one, I mean, I don't know what kind of questions we should be asking to see where we should be setting that number.
Yeah.
Like, how much does 1% impact when you say 16.8% meant that, you know, nothing could screen out? You know, and in the screening, just to confirm, ask the lead agent for CEQA if there's a project that by the numbers, looks like it should be screened out, but staff knows of something that's really specific and odd about that, we can pull that. So screening means that they wouldn't have to go through that for CEQA. But staff, if we know of something that's really weird, that would actually put it below that 15% most likely, we can always pull it and request the VMT analysis anyway. So that is.
Yeah. Yeah, the other, the other part of maybe just kind of perspective here is in that VMT mitigation research, for a suburban town, rural suburban town like Sebastopol, the theoretical maximum effectiveness of if you did everything you could, everything feasible on a site, is reducing VMT down by about 10%. So if you took the average land, the average resident residential unit in Sebastopol, and you put all of the, all of the feasible transportation demand management measures on it, you'd still be above the threshold of significance. And so that has actually, a lot of agencies and a lot of decision makers have asked that about, well, 15% versus 16.8, it doesn't seem like a lot in terms of determining whether you have an impact that needs mitigation or no mitigation. But then can you even mitigate that for the average land use? And so 15% versus 16, 15% would be, in my opinion, fairly stringent, given the mitigation potential.
Yeah, I just kind of did a quick, a quick calculation. It's very minor in terms of, you know, for the average household, the 17.1 vehicle miles traveled. It's like 2.5, the 16.8 is 2.8. So it's not a huge difference in actual vehicle miles. But I hear what you're saying about the, you know, the mitigation becomes more and more challenging as you get to those levels.
And proving it for secret purposes. And I think, you know, where does the evidence point you in terms of that?
So do other commissioners have thoughts on that? The 15% that Vice Jeffrey Fritz is suggesting?
I mean, I agree, I think it makes the most sense.
Okay. Sorry, and just to confirm, we do have the, for office uses? And so this is just office, not industrial?
Well, usually for employment focused uses, places where, you know, the vast majority of your SB 743 VMT is going to be commuters, right? Because we're going to be excluding freight and economic activity from, from those calculations. Yeah, those, those would be carried under the office.
Okay, so just to, a couple of recent examples that have come before the commission. We've had a cannabis manufacturing, and then they have also requested a delivery permit. So in that, the cannabis manufacturing, which is, what, they probably have two or three offices in the building as well as the manufacturing, you know, locations, that would be considered office. But the delivery part of it would not be?
It, it would not be part of that, and it actually may not even be subject to SB 743 at all.
Because it's transportation of the goods, just like when a winery is shipping their wine. That part of the industry is not being.
The actual formal definition, without getting too far into it, is it's VMT generated by automobiles and light trucks, pickup trucks. So your, your delivery, your delivery trucks, those sorts of things are not subject to VMT in the transportation section. They would be subject to VMT and greenhouse gas, energy, and these other sections that consider the whole and complete VMT.
So, and then similar, like we just had Anytime Fitness improved, would that be considered retail?
Boy, that's a tough.
Or, or, you know, obviously the employees there would be part of the office.
I would, if I had to guess, and I, not, not warranting, guaranteeing anything, I'd probably consider that a retail because most of your trips are going to be, are going to be patrons.
Right, and then, but they would be captured by a home base if someone's coming from their home to the gym and back.
Yeah, so if it was, so in that case, it would be home based if we were analyzing a residential project. But for the purposes of the Anytime Fitness project, we'd look at it as a net, net new VMT.
The gym itself, okay, great, okay. So for the office, again, you know, just to confirm, we have the option of doing the region, which is higher. It's a little bit more latitude in terms of a potential revenue generation economic project for the city versus Sebastopol. We actually have a pretty low home to work VMT. Do you know why that is at all?
Yeah, so I think what we're finding just in general is if you work in Sonoma County, usually live in Sonoma County, more so than for the Bay Area region with writ large, where you're, you know, you have people commuting from Concord to Silicon Valley.
Yeah, I know people would commute from Tracy to Fremont.
Or, you know, or, you know, my dad would commute from Santa Rosa to San Francisco, back in the early 90s, where, when one could do that and not go crazy. So, you know, in that case, that commute trip is, that would be 100, right? Because it's 50, or 50, yeah, 55 one way, 55 the other way, so 110. So that's why that number is so high versus employment uses here in Sonoma County that generally fare better. Because work local, live local.
Right, and 11 miles, 12 miles, 11.9, probably here to Santa Rosa and back.
Yeah, on the average.
Or, yeah, and then there's, okay, it's 11 miles, there we go, if you're on the certain side of Santa Rosa.
Very average, John.
It'd be longer to Petaluma, but then the people who live and work in Sebastopol reduce that. So you get that average for the work from home, where they're not, yeah.
Do you even count the work from home? I guess you're counting every person who works.
Well, that would be zero, right?
Every person who works, so what about the people who don't work? Do you count any of those as people too?
No, so this is about commute trips. So our travel models can specifically isolate out the commuter trips. And so a lot of what we've been having to do lately is changing around the numbers and assuming a work from home factor. So now that's beyond, I would not recommend we get deep into that for Sonoma County. But for certain mega office projects, for the Googles and the Facebooks of the world down in Silicon Valley, they have some complex CEQA things that they have to deal with down there. But that will, I can only presume that when the county updates their model, some of these work from home variables are going to hop in there.
Right, but the reality is if you're working from home, you're not producing any VMT. And you're also not going to have a, potentially not going to have an office project because you're working from home, not an office.
Yeah.
But, so, yes, and, but Kathy, retirees do not contribute to home to work based trips. So that's not why, our elderly population is not why we have a low, low commute to VMT.
And that, and that's why, if you look at the variable there, it is per employee and not per resident, yeah, not per person.
Per employee, yeah. And so do you have a recommendation? I mean, it sounds like most people are just using the Bay Area region.
Most people are defaulting.
For the same reason Vice Jeffrey Fritz recommended city for the, or 15% for the, just to make it easier.
Yeah, because it gives you a little more leeway if you use the Bay Area region. I think that makes sense.
It's consistent with the OPR analysis. And so most, most agencies are just going 15% below the region.
Yeah, makes sense to me. Any, anyone else?
Okay. And then there's the question of the 15% below the regional, or if you wanted, I'm assuming you can leave this at 15%, but change this if you wanted to.
Yeah, you, you could. I think that, just for full disclosure, most places are just choosing 15% both sides. I, I think that if you, there was a, I know that there are some agencies in Southern California where employment VMT dominates the residential VMT. I think City of Industry is one of those. I think even they've just kept it at 15%. So the 15% tends to be the magic number out of the State Office of Planning and Research.
Okay, so it'd be 15% below the 22.3.
Yes.
So it would actually allow the VMT for offices to be a little bit higher.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then I don't know where it is in here, but we, you had the comment about the retail.
It's further up in the presentation. There we go. That's our third sub bullet point there.
Yeah, I would say the 50,000 square feet seems pretty high for Sebastopol. I don't imagine us ever getting a 50,000 square foot retail facility. So I, I don't really have a sense of what that number should be, if anyone else does or whatever. Kind of your experiences with other smaller jurisdictions like ours, what they're going towards?
Well, I, I think again, Healdsburg's thinking about 10 for general retail. I mean, your typical convenience stores, about what, 5,000, 6,000 square feet in a lot of cases? So that's about the scale.
Yeah, I think Exchange Bank was 5,500 square feet.
I want to say the new CVS is like 15, I think, just to give people a sense of what that is. Like the new CVS is about 15,000 square feet.
Yeah. Yeah, most of the downtown stores are about 2,000. So yeah, 15, 50,000 is huge for Sebastopol. We do require a conditional use permit, John, do you remember what the square footage is for that? Is it 30,000, which still seems very high to me in terms of potential.
I mean, that's probably like Safeway, it's probably 30,000. Is it Lucky's, like, that's probably that scale?
Yeah.
Which seems like I don't.
I mean, to not analyze traffic on something like that from a VMT seems a little bit odd.
Yeah.
Is the old CVS.
The old CVS, I think.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen because I have a, actually, actually, John has a way of looking it up. Oh, you're looking up the conditional use permit? Okay, I'm going to look up the CVS real quick. So we can answer some of these questions on the fly, that's just how good we are. We don't have to wait for next meeting. Yeah, you know, you're absolutely right on that, Commissioner Burns, because I have a favorite grocery store and I have a closest grocery store. And I have a super close grocery store because we have five grocery stores here since we serve all of West County. Not normal for a town of 7,000. But yeah, if I'm in a, normally I'll go to the closest favorite grocery store. If I have luxury of time, I'll go to my favorite, favorite grocery store, which used to be my closest grocery store. And if I'm really in a pinch, I'll go to the, just the darn no closest grocery store. So yeah, we are spoiled for choice on that one. Okay, so the CVS building is 26,000 square feet. Which is still a very large building, you know, that's, that space. And 30,000 is the threshold for conditional use permit. I personally have, actually, when I first got here, looked at that number and was wondering why it wasn't something more like 15, myself. That's the last place I worked, which was Mill Valley, which is a little bit, very similar in terms of the downtown, smaller downtown, I believe it was 15,000 required a conditional use permit.
Is there a way to, like, think of it as, you know, you know, a larger grocery store in the center of town that has, I mean, I guess that's what they're looking at. So like, how do you encourage a larger grocery store in the center of town that has maybe not as much parking as a grocery store, you know, like, looking at like, you know, Whole Foods versus the Lucky's kind of thing? Like, the Whole Foods has a small parking lot, it's downtown, it is more walkable, people can get there that way. And the Lucky's is bigger and has a bigger parking lot and is kind of more drive to place. Like, I guess the Whole Foods and this, like, how do you, how do you, what's the level to preference something like the Whole Foods versus something like the Lucky's, I guess? But you also, at the same time, want it to be distributed so people can walk to places as well. So it's a little bit of a tricky thing of what you're trying to really incentivize.
Yeah, I think there's, there's certainly, I mean, that's like a whole discussion of like dynamic. So, you know, Safeway is where the Annolly High School students go. If you've ever been around Safeway at 3:30 on a weekday during the school, you know what I'm talking about? I think Whole Foods, I see a lot of people grabbing lunches, so office workers, and they're probably walking there. You know, same with Safeway, but also, you know, when I'm at Pacific over lunch hour, I see folks who are coming in from wineries and stuff or from the Ags and other businesses. And they're going there because then they don't have that extra mile they get to downtown. So yeah, definitely is an interesting dynamic.
Yeah.
But, so we're not, so the conditional use permit at what level is probably a good conversation to have. And we'll add that to our Planning Commission work plan, since that's not necessarily tonight's discussion. But I guess the question is, at what point of that, you know, we're going to bring, I'm hearing 50,000 square feet, let's bring that down. We can certainly, as staff, bring some options back to you at the next meeting. If you want us to look at certain things and see, like, you know, if you have a sense of buildings or uses that you want us to look up, or kind of get a sense of what we've been permitting lately, to get a feel for, you know, well, I know how busy that is and that's that square foot. It's probably a good way to kind of get a handle on it a little bit in terms of what square footage versus traffic.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have a sense of, because, yeah, it's kind of hard at this point to know where to go with it. I feel inclined, and there's probably a tier, some kind of tiered system makes sense. I don't know exactly what the tiers are, but.
So like, the larger scale, like a grocery store being different from?
From, as to local serving, retail, you know, kind of, there's like the, you mentioned like the local serving versus a wider serving. Like, there's people that, there's stores that are just kind of catering to in-town residents, the stores that are catering more towards all of West County or whatever.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, just a, just a reminder that here, you know, these, these screening criteria can always be, you know, revised over time if they get set up. Kerry also mentioned that, you know, if there is a particular project that, you know, maybe isn't as local serving, it fits under that cap, but maybe it's not truly local serving. Staff have the ability to pull that and to require analysis to prove it, if you will. And, and so, yeah, I think, I think I've kind of heard from, from my perspective here, yeah, something less than 50, but then some little bit of homework.
So, so I think Ian and John and. So, so I think Ian and, John and Susie and I will kind of put our heads together and think about what might be a good recommendation. I can also reach out to Healdsburg and a couple of the, you know, Catatti and see, kind of, why did you pick that metric? So we have a little bit more of a, someone who's thought about it and said it at a different, at that different level.
And again, there is the ability to, you know, deny the use of screening for projects with certain elements. I know we've, the, the typical one that gets brought up a lot is drive-throughs. I understand drive-throughs are not going to be happening in Sebastopol probably anytime soon, but that's a, that's a auto-oriented feature that encourages people to drive. So a lot of agencies. Yeah, a car wash, particularly. May have heard some things that are, you know, very much tourist-focused. You know, it may be small, but it's tourist-focused, you don't get to automatically just pass out of, of VMT. And so there have been some discussions at some of the more rural agencies here in, or, sorry, the more, not Santa Rosa, not Runner Parks, not Catattis, about that particular item there as well.
That brought up something, and one last question. How do you do, back to the tourism and hotels? All of these small towns, maybe it's something to talk to Healdsburg, Windsor, they all do these events where people come from all over to the event. So Peestown would be one that we do here. How do you look at the VMT for something like that?
Yeah, so usually the way I go about it is, because of the big data, we're able to plop a zone in the system, and, you know, we can look back at previous events and say, okay, what does the VMT look like? What does the trip pattern look like? If that event were to move to another space, you know, okay, well, what's the VMT effect of that move? Or another way is, if you had a certain type of special event, and then another person wanted to have the same ties, same type of special event ten miles away, you can get a, you can kind of get the catchment area for this original special event space, and then apply that same catchment area to this new space, and then change around the trip lengths associated with that. So big data has been a revolution there, and that's definitely a case where we want to not use the travel model, and really let the actual trip patterns dictate how that VMT gets calculated.
Yeah, and a lot of our special events, like the Apple Blossom Parade, July third, those types of things, they're temporary events that are exempt from this kind of analysis. So that's how they, you know, they're, they're sequels for built projects, not for, there's a, specifically an exemption for temporary events like that. Great, well, this is extremely helpful to us to go back to the drawing board and work on a draft memo and look at, you know, where some of these might be tweaked and bring information back from you. So thank you all very much. Do you have any final thoughts at all?
I'm just going to say, I think that there are, you know, you brought up, you know, the kind of mitigation measures, and like, what kind of projects would we have in Sebastopol? And I think, you know, I think there could be some things that we certainly could do to, to either our own pool, or, you know, impact fee kind of thing, where we kind of pull our own resources to do more bike lane projects, or the bike share programs, or whatever it is.
The shuttle that goes, because there is a Sebastopol shuttle that the city supports, and it's an electric bus.
Yeah.
That Sonoma County Transit does, and I know there was a discussion at the budget meeting this year about, hey, you know, can we afford to continue to do this? Is that something that a mitigation fee could do? And have you ever seen a local community that isn't half a million people, or larger, do their own impact fees for that?
So the short answer is, yes, we have seen that. I think Walnut Creek is a really good example, where they run the, the downtown trolley from their BART station. And there are other ones that run from Pleasant Hill BART, which is actually in Walnut Creek, to other parts along the Treat Boulevard corridor, and using development impact fees and other programs to fund those. So that's a very popular program. There are a handful of other agencies in the Bay Area that kind of have that downtown trolley, if you will. And then, yeah, supplementing these regional connections to, say, a smart station is definitely going to be a backbone of several of the bank and exchange programs. For, for example, Western Riverside County getting people to the MetroLink ninety-one and San Bernardino lines is huge. You could maybe see something similar for Sebastopol for, to get to downtown Santa Rosa, or Catatti Smart, something like that.
I mean, just as an anecdotally, when I first moved here, I still lived, I still worked in San Francisco, and there was a bus that would take me to the financial district that does not exist anymore, you know, which is kind of unfortunate. There's no way to do that.
Great, well, thank you, Ian, and we'll talk tomorrow, I suppose.
Yep, thank you. It's fascinating. So I think that brings us to subcommittee updates. Now that we have, I know the design review talked about the objective design standards today, correct?
They did, and there's a lot of good discussion. They did continue them to the next meeting, to continue discussion of that. So that'll be kind of in line with when that comes to the Planning Commission as well.
And I guess that brings us Planning Director's report.
You know, we just met last week, and I don't think there have been a huge, I mean, we had a lot of updates for the DRB, but that's because we hadn't met with them for a month. So I don't think we have a lot of updates for you tonight, sorry.
That's quite right.
But I'm happy to answer any questions you have, John. Do you have anything? All right.
Kathy, you weren't here last week. You have any burning questions? Oh.
So that project has been bid, and they are getting the contractor going. I don't know if they have started it yet. The last time I was at Ives, actually, I was only at the Art Center on Wednesday. I didn't hear equipment, but I did not go that far into the park. I was only at the Art Center for a meeting, so. Yeah, and then we do have the Amherst Trail project starting up as well, so those are two big projects for the city. And from the budget, the Libipong fencing is not in the budget, but Dante is looking at potential donations and work with the Rotary and stuff like that for that. So, and that would still include that kind of redesign. But it was, it's like, from Dante's assessment, it isn't imminent, it's just in the next few years that needs to be replaced. And so that felt like something that we could do in a little bit more of a planned way with one of our nonprofits.
Great, then with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting, and the fifteenth of August is our next meeting, correct?
That is correct, so August eighth is canceled, and we will be meeting on August fifteenth, and that will be review of the objective design standards. We'll have our consultant here for that as well.
Thank you all.
Recording stopped.